This is a special meeting on June the 16th, 2016 at 7:01. Well, 7:01 in correction, okay? And please stand for the invitation. We'll have a moment of silence for the Orlando community and the rest of the world. And then we'll do the Lord's Prayer. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the kingdom, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
I'd like to establish a forum. We have Council on Dejada, Council on Ortiz, Council on Nieto, Council on Jimenez, and Council on Cantú. We have a forum. Please, let's try to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. We'll start out with citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Tim Bays. I've been a resident of Florisville for 22 years. I may not know anyone up there, but I've seen you around. I wanted to first talk to you all about some things that have been placed on the agenda, about the co-compliance vehicle and the co-compliance officer. This may not be the correct time, so if it's not, please correct me, and I'll get up and speak then. However, I just spent on Tuesday a very hour and a half fruitful meeting with the city manager, with Ms. Riley, with the co-compliance officer, Mr. Mitchell, and with city attorney Chris Hug. I've got an issue that I'm going to bring to you all next week. I'm going to tell you that it may be on the agenda to possibly do away with these positions, with the position of co-compliance officer. However, without the help of Officer Mitchell, I never would have gotten the meeting with Officer Mitchell. And then, of course, the city secretary, Ms. Corral, also helped put all that together. I'm going to wait and tell you about my problem next week because it's going to come in the form of me asking you to pass an ordinance to make our city safer, okay? And it has to do with animals, and it's not chickens. All the chickens in the world could attack me, and I'd be fine. It's going to be bees. However, I'm going to hold off on that. I'm going to tell you that the meeting on Tuesday really restored my faith in what is going on in Florisville and leads me to believe that we are moving in a positive direction with our co-compliance section. In years past, I've had nothing but excuses when it comes to dogs, raccoons, javelinas, you name it. The best the city could do at that point was tell me, catch 'em yourself. You know, feral cats. However, having the co-compliance officer and putting him in a marked vehicle that he can use for his job does advance Florisville and move us forward and out of the 60s, 70s, and 80s. I don't have to catch dogs and cats on my own anymore. I don't have to complain, come here and complain about a neighbor who's keeping goats or anything like that. I have a place to go and someone to take care of it. So I want you to remember, when you take this business that you're going to do tonight into consideration, if you do away with these positions and you don't equip the co-compliance officer the way he needs to be equipped, you're going to move us backwards. Now, I'm going to excuse myself and sit and watch the rest of the meeting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Nate Miss, and I live in Florisville. And my question is, we had some rain. We could go two inches. And on Business 181 in Lowdy Creek, that usually always floods. There's a trailer corpse there. A guy brought in at least two foot of dirt to raise. That area quit flooding. That's a flood plain. Why didn't the city give them a permit to put dirt in a flood plain? Huh?
You said Business 181?
Business 181 in Lowdy Creek. And there was 42 dump trucks that looked like they went and dumped stuff there to raise that up, and that did flood this time. Flooded someplace down the road took that water. Next question is, the road next to Walmart going to River Bend, is that part of the city limits since it's a county road? Well, according to your map, yes. When are you guys going to maintain that? I've been here two years. It's never been cut. It's got mattresses, tires, weeds have grown way past. And since you're doing other roads, that one needs to be maintained too because Walmart's nice, we're going into nice neighborhoods. Mainly coming into town, and that road looks terrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miss. Any other comments?
Tomás Robles, mayor, city council. I am upset about the $42,000, $45,000 on that vehicle. Mayor, I'll give you an F if I can give the city manager or the city council here. I'll give it an F for signing the check and the best.
Mr. Robles, let me stop you.
Just a minute.
Now, let me tell you. From now on, you need to be respectful to this.
I am respectful. Because you don't sign a check. You do not sign a check.
Anyone else, please?
I don't. I don't check. We don't. Number two, this fest right here, el viento perdido. Did you know what he says? His voice goes up. Why are we spending money on it? El viento vamos. Did you know when he comes over here, he comes over here with cocaine? Why do we need these people coming over here with drugs? Why are we launders? Pin a festival, he put a show up there that shouldn't ever take place. He was stoned as is it. And why are we launders? Paul, I had a $200,000 grant to them. Why are we paying grants or paying for grant writers when they, you know, you can go out there and do research and get grants? And that's what I'm saying. And you say, well, it will take a moment for the people that got in Florida and got massacred. Why can't we lower the flag to have staff like we should? Let's not go to the motion. Let's do it. And that's what's happening here. We're not taking pride, we're not taking the time to realize that we need to do it. Florisville. Mr. Jip, the handicapped kid, call me up. If the city keeps on getting, uh, 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 cut your grass, cut your grass, cut your grass. If he's that bad, why are y'all giving him some notices? And I had a discussion with the manager here last time. I'm going to go up there and help him tomorrow and cut his grass, but, you know, we need to pick on other people also to have their grass pretty tall. So if we want to clean up, we have to clean up all the way across. We have to search the people that don't have no way to defend themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Thank you. We'll move on to item number one, the presentation discussion. Item A, purchase of the 2016 Chevy co-compliance vehicle. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, staff, and guests. I placed this item on the agenda because we wanted where exactly where were those funds were exactly coming from? How much? And when were we supposed to receive that vehicle? We had no idea. So maybe our city manager can start from the beginning where it started. You know, the funding for this vehicle and bring us up to date. Andrea? Oh, there you go.
Sorry. Good evening, mayor and city council. So in reference to the vehicle itself, when we started with the eight liners issue, one of the things that came up are the fees that we were assessing to the eight liners. We had several different conversations during that time saying that those funds had to be used for code enforcement itself. We also had a question if we used Officer Mitchell after we had conversations with the chief of police to talk about how we're going to take account of, you know, how many machines there were, how many there were. We had a count to make sure that some were operating, some were not operating. And so after consultation with the chief and Lieutenant Evans, we decided to, I thought Officer Mitchell would be a great candidate to do so. And so it started with that process. And then we talked about where he needed to have the vehicle because we were taking the vehicle away from the police department because he had his car. And so we needed a vehicle, and so we thought that those funds that we received would be adequate to buy the equipment, which we used through the, actually, the byboard that we used to buy off vehicles. Like the chief bought his vehicle this year as well. And so that's where it came. Now, the equipment came on there based on the recommendation from the Lieutenant Evans. Is that right?
That's correct.
As what they put on for the police because my intention was never to make him a civilian employee. My intention was that we need to have necessary, the stick that he carries, the gun that he carries, to be, to put some bite into code enforcement because it's not something that we've had for some time. And so that was the purpose. So that was my thinking and purpose to put it together, especially when we were talking about the eight liners. But we've come across some other things. We had a conversation earlier this evening and before it, where councilman two runs some vacant houses that need to be addressed. Actually, the other day, someone had a fellow sent it to. They actually hooked up to the city's, one of our lift stations. It was stealing water from us, and that the police officer were able to go and to make the proper reports. We need to be able to document that. And I know they can.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to cut you off because the question is not the important sort of significance of co-compliance because we understand that that is needed. The question here is, why are we spending $45,000 on a brand-new truck for this department? Was there ever a budget prepared for this department? What are the funds available in this department? And how does the $45,000 play in this? I know we got the funds, and, I mean, the eight liners aren't here anymore. So, I mean, obviously, we're not going to patrol anymore. So why are we spending $45,000 on a brand-new Chevy truck? I understand you want to have, you know, you know, code enforcement on there. So, I mean, he shows up, that he shows some type of authority. But can we not find a cheaper way to show authority with this vehicle?
I selected the car and approved the car that the police department recommended that they even need to have for this four-way to Rio.
Hold on, who recommended this?
Lieutenant Evans recommended this type of vehicle for this position. And so fully equipped with the police radio. And so that's what the police said that they would need to have to operate that position.
So you went on Mr. Evans' recommendation rather than the council's?
Yeah, because the department, they ask for four vehicles every year, and they don't give them. So when do we start giving them all the, everything that they ask for? It's just, I'm just trying to justify $45,000 on a brand-new truck when nobody else in any other department, our water department, our street department, all the trucks are running down that have problems with the, I mean, and then a four-wheel drive, when you're going on, when you're going on city streets, what's the significance of a four-wheel drive or having a four-wheel drive on this vehicle?
Let's add a towing package.
Let's, uh...
To justify the $45,000, not the position. I understand we need the position.
Right.
And our residents, you know, standard.
The vehicle was actually stepped by the police department. They said that's what they needed to have to run that position. The four, the four-wheel drive.
But this is not for the police department, is it?
Let's, uh, excuse me, let's hear around, and then we'll come back with some questions.
What do you believe from the question that's written?
Fine.
I'll stick with the car.
We'll come back to that. But let's, let's, let's give a chance.
I met with the lieutenant to talk about a vehicle that we could use the funds that we receive because we are short on vehicles. I have to agree. I mean, every department is short on vehicles. The police department uses them every year. And so to take a vehicle away from the police department, to do this, was not something that the chief would recommend. So I said, then we could use the money that we receive because we have to use it for code enforcement, and that's why I thought.
How much money is in the department or within that budget?
Well, it was actually that money that we talked about, the 42 that we paid for, was out of the proceeds that we received from the eight liners.
So what's left from that?
About $12,000 as well.
So how are we going to pay the officer in that department if we use all the funds to buy a vehicle?
Well, we had a position that would offset his salary, that was vacant on the code enforcement side.
But why not use those funds to pay his salary though? And then not spend so much on a truck?
Because his salary was already budgeted for in the CBA, as was the warrant offer that we assigned for a code that was already.
And there was nothing else that he didn't have department other than a $45,000 truck?
Well, they need other equipment. I mean, he.
I know, but we've already used the majority of it on this truck. I mean, how did we budget for this? That's what I'm saying. Was our budget prepared? I mean, Mr. Evans prepared a budget for this department?
He said the recommendation for that. And I apologize if I put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, because actually, he's a lieutenant. I mean, he's not, he's not in charge of our transportation.
I was trying to make sure that we put the money that we received for the eight liners appropriately towards code enforcement equipment or that if I did things out of sequence and I should have brought it to council first. I apologize. That was not my intention to do so. My intention was to try to get this program of code enforcement up and running. And maybe in my zealousness, I shouldn't have actually ordered the car until you all had a chance to look at it. We ordered this, and we ordered the chief. He found his money that we had for a vehicle that he had in the tax note. He said, you pay half for a car. He found the other half out of acquisition, and he ordered, got his car to be able to do that because I'm trying to build a fleet for the police department. But.
I've got a question. Since when do you, I mean, is this common practice that you ask other employees or other departments to make a decision like this?
I would ask the recommendation if it's going to be something that they're going to use. It would be part of that decision.
You don't have to be a police officer to be co-compliance, do you?
No, you don't, but I would recommend.
And then, so why would you even?
Because the eight liners were a different type. You know, he's going on to the code enforcement.
No, no, I'm, I'm still on the truck. I'm trying to see, you know, where, where, where you're coming from. I mean, I haven't seen no relation from buying that vehicle or to, to asking the police officer or recommendation for that. I mean, there's, there's no.
Bottom line, there's no budget prepared for this, for this department. And, I mean, we're just, and to make a purchase like this is, you know, this is really out of line. I mean, you don't do this in any other departments. I've never seen you spend $45,000 on anything without, without asking for us. You know, you asked us to spend $15,000 on a company to fix a water line, but you won't come up here and suggest a $45,000 truck purchase? So you, I mean, you took that upon yourself because Lieutenant Evans said?
As I said, the problem could be in.
I don't think Lieutenant Evans is part of our budget process anymore.
Yes, you take some. Yes, sir, he's part of the city of Florisville.
I know, but I say he's not part of our budget process.
It's not.
He's not. We prepare budgets and go to his department. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to discount the position of the code enforcement. Just we're talking the actual purchase.
Okay, I hear you.
$45,000.
Yes, sir, I hear you.
Well, another city has a four-by-four brand-new truck that does co-compliance.
I couldn't tell.
I mean, because you made the recommendations. I figured you got it from other cities or from his experience or?
Mayor, let's move on. There's a.
Well, there's also a question that could be asked about the position of full-time or part-time, but that's an item on here.
Correct.
That is a third item, sorry. Because that's even more critical than purchasing a vehicle, I think.
Well, they're, they're both critical.
Things on the record.
They're all, they're all critical. Here's a, back, I think it was December 14th, 2015, City of Florisville City Council Directive Number Nine. Rules and regulations relating to city managers' authority to expend funds without approval of city council. One point oh one, the purpose. The city of Florisville is governed by a city council that relies upon a city manager for daily operations and administrations of the city. In order to accomplish task association with daily administration, certain expenditures of funds are necessary. Necessary. However, the city council of Florisville has the ultimate responsibility for the usage of taxpayers' funds. And so it is necessary to establish by policy a maximum, a maximum amount that the city manager may expend without explicit approval by the city council, this body of Florisville. The policy is, as it reads, "The city manager is hereby directed that expenditures amounting to $25,000 and no cents or greater shall require the approval of the city council of Florisville. It shall be deemed a violation of this policy if the city manager divides a single expenditure which amount is greater than $25,000 and no cents into smaller expenditures to avoid requirements of this policy." To the best of my recollection, and I believe it is the council's best recollection too, we did not authorize our city manager to spend $45,000. Plain and simple. Let's get down to the nitty-gritty. We did not. Is that correct, ma'am?
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay, let's move, move on now. That has been established. That is a big no-no here. Purchase orders. This was February 24th, 2016. Somebody purchased this, but it was received, I assume, by our city controller, Cani Moreno. It wasn't last week. So then we go on, and we move on to that day before or after that afternoon or that morning. You signed for it, ma'am. Did you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's move on now. Who gave our community development director the authority to contract this vehicle?
No one.
She signed it?
She signed it. She had reviewed it.
No, ma'am. It's a contract. Who gave her that authority? Was it you?
I don't remember giving her the authority.
That is why I had asked her, I had asked you that I wanted her and the city controller here so they could answer those questions. It is unfair for us to go into debt with this without them not being here.
As I said, the controller was sick today, and she had a doctor's report and could not make this meeting. And Miki had an emergency with her daughter and could not make this meeting. However, I signed and approved that, and if there's any blame to be placed, I will take it.
Thank you. Let's move on to 5/20/16, 2016. It was accepted by our community development director. This vehicle was accepted 5/20/16 by our co-compliance and our development, development director. And I believe Officer Mitchell from co-compliance accepted that vehicle too?
I didn't understand your question, sir.
Did you accept this vehicle?
When it was delivered, yes. They signed for the.
When it was delivered?
Yes.
I don't remember signing for it. I do remember inspecting it, verifying that everything was there that was placed on the alert.
There were some steps here just without council knowing of this and giving final approval of this. It's, it's, it's been documented that we, as a body, the council gave a directive to our city manager, and she violated that directive. Again, that's a big no-no. At this floor, at this time, I'll put up the floor for more questions from the city council. Thank you, Mayor. I'll start from my right to my left with Councilman.
Going to Mr. Nieto.
No, I pretty gave my piece on what I want to say.
The only thing that I, I want to say is that we had talked about it, I think, two weeks before, Ms. Turner, that everything over $25,000, we were supposed to do okay. We, we talked about it, I think it was the second meeting that I came to.
Mr. Turner, my, my question is, I see the purchase order being dated back since February.
Accepted.
What was the delay and what was the reason not for discussing with the council at that time?
I can't remember some type of, we've had a lot of different activity during that time in the new year. I can't tell the council. Also, the chief ordered a car as well that we signed as the purchase order. And for what, I believe that was more along the line of about $35,000 for his vehicle. But I can assure the council that I hear you and gave in $25,000 or more will be brought to the council for approval regardless of what it is for whatever department.
And I'll repeat what Mr. Nieto said. There was a sewer line on A Street. I believe the amount was $15,000.
$13,000, yes, it was.
And a special meeting was called on a Friday night so we could approve that $15,000. You recall that?
Yes, I did.
As far as the specs, it was Mr. Evans that ordered the vehicle with all the specifications?
Yes, sir.
And co-compliance had nothing to do with this?
It was based on Lieutenant Evans. I know that Officer Mitchell consulted with him as well as the chief, but that's what the specifications they brought for for the.
And why did you buy this vehicle from outside dealer and pay so much for it?
It's a byboard, and so.
And so what?
Byboard. It's a state-approved company that sells off the cars. So most of the cars that we go through, we go through the state byboard.
But you didn't shop around or whatever?
It, it.
That's pretty expensive for that truck. That's way expensive.
It's a state, it's a state byboard, and so that's what they've given us as a byboard. We're a member of the byboard.
And from what it looks for, you paid over sticker price? And where did that extra mon, extra amount of dollars go paying all that?
It has a police package on it, and that's where the police bought the byboard. The police vehicle, the chief's vehicle, that's where he purchases as well. The other vehicles that we buy, we buy with the byboard.
One thing, that's, that's what, I guess we don't understand on both sides, is that the co-compliance has nothing to do with the police department.
If, because the person who would be driving that vehicle or working in co-compliance from what we were trying to put together, that person would be a full-fledged police officer.
It doesn't have to be.
No, so it does not have to be.
If that co-compliance needs assistance, we could, we could call one of the police, police officers to assist.
And then work the other way around. If the police department needed assistance for backup, he could work the other way around as too, that we'd have another person to help as soon as.
But we already have a police department, ma'am. That's what I'm trying to get at.
I know we have a police department. But what I'm saying is that if you really want to have any kind of thing, bite into your code enforcement, because we have not had any type of code enforcement for some time in City of Florisville, you need to have someone who carries a stick. Now, we have had a civilian that did our code enforcement, and we're not as successful as we have in the short time that he's been doing this full-time.
Back again, if you need assistance from the police officer, we're all citizens. You should be able to call a police officer and get assistance. It doesn't, there's no requirement that you have to be a police officer to do that.
And council manager, on this discussion, we're on the truck. We can definitely pick this up when we get to that item.
Okay.
One question. Wasn't there another vehicle in the department, or was this? There was no vehicles.
There's a smaller vehicle, I think, the one that, other one.
The one that, David?
It's a, it's a small escape that they have, but it did not hold, it could not hold a police package. And if a police officer is going to be driving, and he's going to be doing our code enforcement, it needs to have a police package.
Police package?
Yes.
So that's a co-compliance guy? It's not a police officer?
He's a police officer. He's a sworn officer.
Well, I understand that.
That's what it's assigned to do.
But we, we, we haven't established a position.
Turn off the, I'm sorry, turn off the, I'm sorry.
We'll get to that.
Let's, uh, about this price tag, $45,154. That is not the total amount, correct?
For the vehicle?
For the entire vehicle, yes. Can you update the council where this vehicle's at? Any lights are on, added, any decals from the city of Florisville?
It's not decal yet.
But can you update us where it's at? How much more it's going to cost? Because this figure's not right.
It's at the shop to be decal.
Correct.
But I did not have any decal because when I was at my conference, the conversations came up and so I said I wanted you to wait. It does have the bars. They took up, we have radios and everything. You want to speak to it for me at last?
Sure.
If you would, Council.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully I can answer a few of your questions.
Okay, can you, can you tell me how, what's the price for the lights, the?
The base, the base price for the police package vehicle was twenty-eight thousand.
Correct?
Okay. Then what we did is we ordered the vehicle with all the equipment already installed in it unlike we've done in the past where my understanding is the police department orders a vehicle, it comes back and then we scrounge off other vehicles to attach to the new vehicle. This being a new vehicle with no other vehicle to pull from, we had to put everything in it. So it came fully loaded, lights, siren, radio, radar, camera system, everything you can imagine that's needed for a police vehicle. It was a police package vehicle, being a police officer still controlling the streets, still backing up other officers in critical situations, which I have already done. It needed to be a police package and that was the reason for the, it's called a PPV.
Correct, where's this vehicle at now?
At this current time, I dropped it off at Weston's last Tuesday. And as far as I'm aware, it's still there.
Okay, and, and what are they supposed to be doing?
They are supposed to be putting on decals and tinting the windows, sir.
And is that free?
No, sir.
How much is that?
The estimated cost was four hundred dollars, sir.
Okay, so this price here is not right, correct?
Well, for the purchase of the vehicle.
I'm not talking about the vehicle. I'm talking about where it's at, the total cost. The, the end price.
The end price, I'm unsure of.
That is why I wanted our city comptroller and our community development director here to answer more questions that we wanted to ask. And I believe it is unfair for them not to be here and defend themselves. You are here. You can defend yourself. She's here. But we cannot order or direct a city employee to be here. She does.
In reference to the package decal itself, Councilmember, it hasn't been paid. There's no expenditures. Have funds have been paid, have been issued, have been spent. We haven't even been invoiced for that. I think the invoice is somewhere around four hundred dollars, but we haven't been invoiced in reference to that. Because we asked, I asked them to stop whatever they were doing, to put it on hold.
Okay. We'll eventually get a final bill for the entire deal, the vehicle, the entire deal. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And keep discussing it during the CNA. Okay, thank you. Well, under new business? Under new business, we have the first item and we have a CNA to approve M and S Engineering Task Force regarding twelve-inch water pipeline extension. Event Center Fire Will Approve. Councilman.
Okay, we discussed this at our last meeting and I wanted to talk to the comptroller. Hope the comptroller can shed some information on using funds from our water department to help support this project. I understand today we're just approving a task order, not the actual construction cost of it, but just to see if through our water fund we can complete this project.
Okay, so I spoke to the comptroller and my memo dated June fourteenth speaks to the fact that according to what your attorney said at your last meeting, he provided you with the information that we could not use hotel motel tax for that. Unless specifically only for the event center. And so we can do the task order, which is the design of fifty-five thousand dollars out of the existing water fund that we have funded now, but it would not take the project to closure. And I understand the design is based on whatever they come up with, somewhere around two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So there lies of where we can get the money to pay for the actual implementation of the twelve-inch sewer line. So the recommendation option we have is a tax note.
The twelve-inch sewer line?
Twelve-inch water line. Some water. Sewer line is already there actually. I checked with Mr. Hymer. It's enough capacity.
I think you said sewer.
I'm sorry, water.
Why can't we use the water enterprise?
It only, it has enough to do the fifty-five, but not enough to do the two hundred and fifty thousand because that money has been allocated to be reinvested back into the water itself. So you don't have three hundred thousand dollars as we look at it today to do that type of capital.
And are we sure that it requires twelve inches all the way from the tower all the way to the event center to fit the needs of the park? Just the park?
It's not just the needs of the park. It's the needs of the event center itself.
Well, that's what I'm saying, just that property.
Yes, because you have a small line that was installed and it's about a mile and a half down ninety-seven in order to go get the water where you need to replace that line. Because it's a small line, you can't increase the line. You have to increase the entire line. You can't step it down.
What's the purpose of this, the water?
The purpose of the water is two-fold. One, your event center needs enough water so you can have enough water pressure to run your sprinkler system. Because that's the standpoint right now today, you do not. The second, there would be the infrastructure for the water if you decide to do the baseball fields behind you, you need water. There's no drinkable water.
So, right now, I understand it doesn't have to be part of a water. Why can't we just put a water well there?
Your design, your draft design has a concession stand. Concession stand typically needs to have drinkable water.
Okay.
As well as your toilets and bathrooms because people will assume that the water in the sink, they can use splash in the face, but the water.
But we have sufficient water for that. You're saying we don't have sufficient water for the fire?
You don't have sufficient water for the water. Or at this point, you don't have sufficient water to water fields, the well that.
We're not talking about fields anymore. We have sufficient water to maintain the building. If we had to run a water line or two to, for water conduits or whatever, we're able to do that. Right now, I guess from what it sounds like, the concern is that we don't have enough water to take care of our fields for the irrigation system and all. So.
I was just pointing, Tom Turner, the engineer is here. They can also beat this up.
I know you didn't see him walk in.
Sorry, Senator.
Thank you.
Tom, when we talked about this project a few years ago when we had Barry look at it, there was two options we were looking at. We were looking at a water well on site. And also, we also were looking at the design to be close for the restrooms and concession stand to be close to the event center to connect with our water from the facility. If it was just to be for bathroom and concession, there was enough pressure to accommodate that. Do you see it differently then?
Yeah, as Ms. Turner said, the primary purpose of the waterline extension is to enhance the fire suppression system of the event center. You have a six-inch line. It does not provide the volume of water flow at the pressure that we need it to properly drive those sprinkler systems. That is the primary purpose of the waterline extension. And as you all know, we are contemplating a community park behind the event center. That facility will need some additional water over and above what it can get to. It's not really the water for the concession stand is a very small amount, but when you consider the irrigation systems that are going to be required to properly water the fields.
That's what I was asking.
We're going to need some additional water. So the essence, the water line that we're composing both enhances the fire system at the event center and it helps feed water to the community park that we're going to need. Now, if I could address the well, we did look at a couple of different options to the twelve-inch line. And we did consider a well. It's actually a well on the side.
There's a well site.
It's way back. Unfortunately, we don't know much about the well. We hear from the water staff that it is inoperable. We don't know much about it. I've looked in the shed. Can't tell much from what I see, how much it produces or what have you. If we could get that well back into order, we probably need to construct a very large tank and booster pump system to be able to deliver the fire flows back to the event center. And that's the same, the same would be true for any irrigation system that we needed to drive.
But have we looked at a cost for just another well? Doesn't have to be that big of a well?
Yes, we did. A well that would be needed would be fairly large. It would be fairly similar to the three wells that you have within the city today. A new well is easily a half million dollars easy.
All right.
If you drill a new well on the event center site.
I mean, I hear people drilling wells all the time for forty, fifty thousand dollars, water wells.
Not for the volume and pressure that we.
For irrigating and stuff?
No pressure.
I mean, that's a, that's a pretty large number.
Yes.
I was going to ask you, how do we, how do the other fields get watered? You know, the other fields that are over there, there's, how do we get the water over there?
Are they irrigated? I don't believe they are irrigated. I'm sorry, I don't.
They took the water truck and watered what they can there and then sometimes. But they have water there, don't they have?
There's, there's two inches.
There's a two-inch line and they, they run, pose this, that, but the one's there. One or two lines out. So there's, there's water there. There's no water in here. There's a line there that gets there and they bring out the water from the person, but it's bad six-inch line. Is the pressure that you would need to.
It's bad off the existing six-inch line.
That's a six-inch line. It's not enough to be more pressure for your, that building is fully sprinkled, but it won't work because you don't have enough water pressure to do that. And as I said earlier, if you have a Y M C A, the bathrooms and everybody that flushes, you do not have enough water capacity. If that building was fully being this full capacity. And so we need to get more water to that building.
My question here was going to be, how does this affect the people living in that area from the park, Pecan Park, the hospital, the tank set to the event center?
They're probably not going to realize any difference. The line would be bigger, pressure would be slightly better, so it would be, it would be an improvement.
And then how would that help with future development in that area? Like if they wanted to build subdivisions there in that area, I mean, I know there's a lot of raw land on, you know, on one side of the highway.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically increasing your ability to serve new development in that area.
So aside from just the event center, I know that's a purpose now. I mean, this is going to help with the infrastructure along the way. Because I think we're missing that, which is a big point. There's a lot of homes in that area. There's a lot of land in that area. I don't think we're looking at developing that, that talks of that. So this is going to help.
It's a part of our annexation.
Yes, because there's about five or six homes that's along the highway. They're not necessarily in the city. And then they have some property, Mr. Omen, I don't know if I said his name, Mr. Omen who sold the property to the city.
Behind Ev Street?
Yes, has actually said that he's working on a subdivision, that he's doing references there. And this, this line, that subdivision could tee off of it and would give him enough pressure for a small subdivision.
And then what I brought to your attention, Ms. Turner, was on our water fund two-two-one was the amount in that one should be sufficient enough to complete this project. I know we have funds set aside for the used DA projects, which takes up the majority of that, but I think still was left, you know, should be sufficient to be able to fund this project, correct?
Yes, we could fund the project doing that. If this is what you care to do, we need to see how much restricted funds the USDA would, the USDA would have us to do once we come up with a dollar amount. But that could be a funding source as well as additional tax note or a certificate of obligation.
Tom? So what's, what's the timeline on this? If we should approve this tonight, what's the next step?
The next step would be the design. I believe we have about four or five months in there for the scheduled design. And it's a little long because we've submitted to TxDOT for a permit because we plan to use their right of way to put the water right in. And then, you know, we would go into construction just as soon as we can, we can bid. So, you know, if we started within the next thirty days, we could be in the construction probably at the beginning of the year or in the spring. And I would suspect take about six months to complete, so summer of next year would be a reasonable timeframe to expect completion.
Mr. Turner, and the allocation or the usage of four B tags cannot be used? If they're approving, you know, verbally approved of one point five or approximately, is it within their scope to fund this project?
Thanks. I've had a conversation with Mr. Baker. He has indicated that they were willing to do the bond money for the park, not necessarily infrastructure, the conversation that we've had. They've expressed that they would be willing to do something for park approval, but not necessarily what he has indicated to me.
It isn't within their scope? Are they able to do it?
They're able to, however, they want to do it. One of the conversations that we had and Tom is part of that process as well.
If it's in a residential area, that's a reasonable question.
I don't know the answer. I'd have to get Marissa over there. I know it gets iffy on that, but I can check with that and I can give you an answer on whether they could contribute to, you know, refund the city expenses or things of that nature.
Well, the reason I'm saying that if hotel motel is available for part of construction, then that could replenish that four B.
The attorney has a move to me and it's written in the wrong that anything that a hotel motel can only be used for the event center. It could not be tapped up over anything else, is what he said.
Yeah, because that's for infrastructure. I mean, we can do that for infrastructure.
According to your attorney, you can only use hotel motel tag for this or any other part of the like. It is exclusively used by the event center. If it's going to add on, if anybody's going to tap on it, it could be hotel motel tag.
There are other code sections where it's specifically mentioned. You can use it for a facility and related infrastructure. In the hotel occupancy tax code section, it just says facilities. And thus, indicating the legislature can be limited to these deals.
So in other words, what we're saying is that if you run that line, you cannot use it for. Citizens use.
Not if we use the hotel occupancy tax.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
Council, any other discussion?
With just a task order, Mr. Turner, I mean, can I suggest that, I mean, this we discuss also during budget since it's not going to take place in next year for using the water fund and that way you'll have a better idea too with the USDA with the funds available in the two-two-one fund and being able to budget for this.
Yes, sir. Do we want to continue with your approval of your sign?
Do you have citizen comments?
After the motion.
After the motion, sir. I'll call him. I assume we forget.
I assume we'll be approved the task order.
All right. I have a second.
A second?
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve M and S Engineering Task Force. Now we have citizens coming. Please step up.
Good evening. I'm all in favor of getting water out of the event center for the new sports complex. I know at Fruit of Bend, we put a new well in a few years ago that furnishes waters of the entire golf course, which is a piece of land a lot larger than what we're talking about at the event center. So you might want to consider taking a look at that. The other thing that I talked about and M and S told me they looked into it and somewhat dismissed it was one of the problems we have is that we have this sports complex. We got everything going out there, but a lot of our kids in the city can't get there unless they have a car. And a lot of kids under the age of seventeen don't have a car. And so we've always, we've advocated extending E Street out to the event center. And we also advocated, we also advocated putting a extension of the water system that services E Street out to, that's another six-inch pipe, out to the event center for the purpose of taking care of the fields. And it would also, it would also tie in with the aerobic arena and that whole area that will be. And it would also, it would also tie in with the aerobic arena and that whole area that will be, will be, come to life, I hope, and be, be expanded in the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
My name's Nick Mason, I live in Floridusville. I got a question, I might have missed it in the newspaper. I may have missed it on your website or the government bid site. But I'm under the impression since it's in the state contracting and code two-five-two-dash-zero-two-one, anything over fifty thousand dollars, you must go out for a formal bid. I haven't seen the formal bid or anything on that.
This is under the professional services exemption to the requirement for bidding, it's contained in the statute as well. So same thing with lawyers, engineers of that nature, those are exempted from those. And M&amp;S is one of the three.
Or professional services that are going to be professional services, but you're going to do a contractor services at the end of it.
And we'll go up for bid for the actual project.
Goes up for bid for the actual project?
Yes.
And so you have M&amp;S on a contract to do this stuff?
Yes, they are on a, they're one of the three approved city engineers.
Okay, because I didn't see it and I couldn't find it.
It's part of the task order that he provided to us. Of course, you're going over the bidding process and they'll, they'll go over the bids and collect the bids and you'll give us their recommendation, they'll call the references and everything on that. So it's all part of the engineering services, but the actual contract work is going to go out for bid.
Then I'd like to suggest maybe put on the website, that way you won't have a lot of people complaining about professional services give the definition. Because, you know, me, I was running for a position, but I've had a lot of people ask me about it. And reading the code here, not seeing over says professional services here, I'll look at some more. I understand that, I know you're running, I know that's right. We may need to put that to keep people from picking on you, but we need to stop some of this stuff.
It's just a handful. It's just a handful, but.
Yes.
Any other comments? Anyone else, all right, let's take a vote. All in favor? Raise your right hand.